Good afternoon. I want to call the Committee of the Whole Meeting to Order. Sheila, can you please give a roll call?
Mr. Furman.
President.
Dr. Giles. Pastor Jones.
President.
Dr. Guadalupe.
President.
Ms. Woodruff.
Here.
Dr. Hans. Ms. Newman.
Here.
Ms. Root, gave notice, she wouldn't be able to listen. Ms. May. Mr. Torres. Mr. Cowan.
President.
Mr. Young.
Here.
We have quorum. We're good.
Okay, thank you. The first opportunity for public comments, we got started a little late with technical difficulties, but are there any people online who would like to make a public comment? There'll be another opportunity at the end. Is there anyone in the room who would like to make a public comment? And there'll be an opportunity at the end of the meeting. Item one C, I need a motion for approval of the agenda. Do a voice vote, all those in favor by aye, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So first item of business is for the Finance Committee, the December 2024 financial update. Robert, can you update?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. So we're going to be going over the December financials this evening. And I don't know if there's going to be slides that go along with it, but I will walk through. First slide is going to go over our revenue. And we can see the trend in our revenue and the distribution between the different funding sources. And that trend is relatively consistent with what we've seen in the past. We are hopeful that we see some upward trend there, obviously. And you can see the makeup between the different funding components. As we were discussing in the meeting earlier today, that shift away from dab and into the tan of funding, which is a lower level of reimbursement to us. On the next slide, we'll take a look at our eligibles, which is a driver for our funding. And you can see a slightly upward trend in terms of the number of folks that are being determined as eligible. Next slide gives us an overview of our assets and how they compared to the prior, end of the prior year. And for the balance sheet, we typically do that relative to year end prior year. And you can see increases in our cash and a slight decrease in our receivables. Overall, relatively consistent between those two periods, just with that shift. And that, that just has to do oftentimes with the timing of when our money arrives. The next slide will provide an overview of our liabilities. And again, over the time periods, relatively consistent. Nothing dramatic to report there. And then, obviously, on the balance sheet, the conclusion of that is our net position. And you can see that year to date, we did have a slight decrease for the month of December in particular. Our decrease to fund balance was about $200,000, which is a significant improvement from the prior two months on an average basis. Next slide will give us an overview of our revenue. You can see that relative to same time prior year, we did have a pretty meaningful increase, about $6 million in our Medicaid revenue. And our other revenue was relatively flat. On the following slide, our expenses. An increase overall in the outflows to our provider network, which means that we're pushing money out into the community for services. And then the next slide just gives us a little bit of a closer view than the one on the balance sheet to our change, our net change and our financial position. Which, again, I mentioned, year to date is about a $2.2 million decrease in our fund balance and a $200,000 decrease for the month of December. And then finally, our, just an overview of our providers and the weight that they carry in the network. I believe there is one more slide. And that's remained relatively consistent over time. Again, just to note that Easter seals and mork, I believe, were represented separately on this graph. And if combined, would be obviously a much more pronounced bar on the left-hand side. And I'm happy to answer any questions or follow-up.
Any questions from Finance Committee members?
Oh, okay.
Yes, I was just wondering, when were you going to combine the Easter seals and the, and the mork?
Well, I think that'll probably be after the March statements.
Okay.
Which would be about mid-year, yeah.
Any other questions? Are there any issues that you're concerned with on timing of either payments coming in or going out? Payments coming in from state or other sources, or?
Well, we will be finalizing our cost settlements with our providers for the 2024 year. So that will put some pressure on our outflows, for sure. And on the inflows, just the fact that it appears some of the money that had been targeted for mental health might not be coming our way as had been expected, but we're continuing to press on that.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I see we have contracts that were added. First one, Mark, looks like you have two of the three.
Good afternoon. Mark Duguid again, Director of Facilities for Oakland Community Health Network. We're seeking a three-year contract extension for MCMI. As you know, our, some of our equipment is 40 years old. And part of that equipment is the controls. And the controls are proprietary and they have to be serviced by somebody who is authorized. And the only authorized dealer is MCMI. So we've been with them for the entire eight years, well, six years we've been in the building. We are looking to make some upgrades, but at this time, we need to take about, we got a three-year plan, I think it's a three-year plan that we're looking at for upgrading the system. And so we are stuck with MCI for that time. I can take any questions for our HVAC system?
Any questions? So, um, if I'm looking at this correctly, we've been with them since 2018, right?
Since we moved in the building, that's correct.
Okay, um, the building is 40 years old, or what, that's, I'm?
That's correct. The building is, it was built in 1985.
Okay.
The equipment is the original equipment.
Ah.
The HVAC equipment.
Okay.
Along with the elevators, but that's the next contract.
Yeah, no, we're not going to talk about that right yet. Just hang on, hang on. Okay, um, if there are no questions, can I get a motion to move this on to the full board?
I think you just helped me raise a question. In relation to the age of the building and the equipment that's been in that long, right? And you're mentioning that this is the company, mechanical, it's the only company that can service it based on the proprietary or whatever information that they have. So are you trying to replace the equipment? Or just service it in relation to the life of that equipment?
I would, I would. Yeah, I would love to be able to replace it, but we can't replace it at this time because of the cost of the equipment. So, but we need a maintenance contract to maintain the equipment. And so it needs to be serviced annually. And, and we need to, we need to have a company under contract who we can call. And MCMI is the only authorized dealer in Michigan that handles our region. And so we're kind of married to them right now until we change the whole control system. There's a couple of different components, right? There's the mechanical controls, the actual boilers and compressors. And then there's the equipment that controls it all. And so the equipment that controls it is Andover and it's proprietary.
So in, in that, I guess, there's, there's a point where the cost of maintenance in the contract, you know, sort of crosses the same line as it would be cheaper to buy the equipment over a period of time. And I'm, I'm sure you're doing that analysis to say, when in this three-year period, should we be looking for, you know, that replacement? Because we would save more at that time with upgrading the equipment, less maintenance, you know, better capabilities and all, since we have had some issues during the cold months, okay, with the present equipment?
Sure. Yeah, we're, we're taking a good look at that. And we've also hired a, an architect, mechanical construction architect to take a look at our system. And they gave us a complete physical study of our equipment, how much life we have left in the equipment, by how we maintain the equipment. And so that has been discussed with our CEO, COO, and CFO. And we're taking a look at how we can go about replacing this equipment.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Because this time last year, we put dampers on?
That's correct.
Okay. And what was the cost of that? Do you remember?
I think it was about $119,000. Keep in mind, we got a grant for that money.
Right.
That was COVID money, we got a grant for that. In fact, I was just reminded today that we got a hundred, another $150,000. And we're looking at projects that can be used for that as well. Remember, these, the dollars are specific to air cleaning and air quality. So I just can't use it on anything. Believe me, I wish I could, but you can't use it on anything. It has to qualify. And air dampers qualify for that. Again, that allows us to bring in fresh air into the building.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Sarah?
The $75,000, is that like a retainer fee, so to speak? Or is that, we think there's going to be $75,000 worth of repairs?
No, no, the, the, the annual cost for the service is right around $18,000. They have about, it's about $1,600 a month for their servicing fee. And then I've built in a cushion for repairs. So I, I averaged it out, it's $25,000 a year.
Okay, thank you.
So in today's dollars, what would be the replacement cost?
Replacement cost?
Mm-hmm.
Knew you would ask that question. Somebody would ask that question.
It all started with this gentleman. We were, we were doing fine.
Listen, I, I usually get away scot-free, right? No questions. It's about $6 million.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, it's about $6 million to replace the.
$25,000 is.
Yeah, but then we can also see that this will be an ongoing expense for the foreseeable future. Until we find $6 million somewhere, maybe start buying the luxury.
Yeah.
You know, as we go through this, I, I think the job that Mark has done with what he has has been excellent. And as we look at, you know, futures and all of that, because there is that point of, you know, that we, we come up with. And hopefully, there may be grants or something else, or trial, trial machines. I, I live next to a guy who, uh, he, they repair train cars. And one of the benefits that he has is that if there's a train wreck, everything on the, on the train, on that car, he gets it free, whatever. And it, and it may be, maybe there's some equipment like what you use.
You make the motion so we can save Mark from our.
That's another, that's another story at another meeting. And next time he and I are together, I will talk to him about it. But you do a great job. Thank you with what you have.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I'll make a motion to accept the contract as presented.
And we'll move it on, okay, and we'll move it on to the board for next week. All right, Sheila, we need a roll call on this.
Um, I need somebody from the Finance Committee to support.
Oh.
I am.
Oh, I did.
Who?
I supported, I, I'm sorry.
Support? No problem. You just agree at the, at the board meeting.
Support.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Furman?
Yep, support.
Dr. Guadalupe? Dr. Giles? Pastor Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, all right. Well, Mark, lucky you, you get the next one, too.
We're also looking for approv, approval for contract extension for MEI for one year. And during this time, we'll, we'll take the time to do an RFP, because we have some mandatory upgrades that needs to be done. Again, the two things that weren't touched when we moved into the building was the HVAC and the elevators. And so they both are 40 years old. Our manufacturer of the elevator, Dover, has informed us as of last year that they no longer support the controls which are analog. And so we are forced to make the conversion to each one of the cars to digital controls. And so we need to do a package deal where we upgrade the elevators as well as a service contract. The good thing about the upgrades is they are filled with safety features that we don't currently have. One in particular that I'm excited about, that if the power ever goes out and somebody's in the elevator, they now have individual battery backups on the elevator, which means that if somebody is in the elevator when the power goes out on the fifth floor and they no longer have to be forced to pick up that digital phone, the elevators would automatically let down to the first floor and the doors would open. So excited about that feature. I know that probably doesn't mean anything to you guys, but I'm excited about that feature because I won't get that late night phone call. Absolutely, absolutely, absolutely. So we're, we're seeking a one-year contract extension for elevators.
Okay, so that's, actually, I'm going to talk to you after because some of our older dorms have that fifth-floor stuck problem. Any questions first from the Finance Committee, and then I'll open up to the whole board? Maybe, oh, this one everybody's fine with. Anybody from the Policy Committee, any questions? All right, so then can I get a motion to move this on to the full board? Give a second.
Support.
All right, Sheila, can we get a roll call?
Mm-hmm. Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Dr. Giles? Pastor Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Guadalupe?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you, Mark.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, Robert, you're back up for item D sub three, Raymond Contract.
Hello again. We're presenting for consideration an extension of the Raymond Contract for nine months. Raymond is the group that is assisting us in terms of our financial consulting and completion of a lot of our reporting. And also my orientation to OCHN on the, on some of the more technical aspects of Medicaid funding and reporting.
So the current contract runs through the end of March?
Correct.
That was, okay, so that was a full year. This is, let's see, nine months, 10 months?
Yes, uh, nine months.
Nine months. Um, is it very similar to the contract we were just ending, or?
Yes, with the exception of the time period, yes.
Okay, okay. All right, questions first from Finance Committee? Yep, Sarah?
So, um, is, I guess, is nine months typical? It looks like it ends at the end of the calendar year, so I didn't know if that was pertinent. And then is that something you'll think will end at that particular time? Or will continue looking for their services?
So I don't believe that it, it'll end in its current iteration in that I don't think that we'll need the same level of intensity and, and time commitment at that point. But I expect that we'll continue to need some consultative support after that, just not at the same level.
Okay, and so the ending at that, end of the calendar year makes sense? Not like a one, I mean, a lot of these others are like one year, two year?
It does, and it's a little optimistic in that it'll carry us through the end of the following quarter after the end of our fiscal year. But I think it's a good time to reevaluate what the needs of the organization are at that point in terms of what then the subsequent support would look like.
Thank you.
Yeah, in the past, we, when we have discussed this, um, the hope was that the, a lot of these functions will be able to be carried out internally by the staff. And, but we needed time for their training, et cetera. What is the progress on that?
So I, I think this would represent roughly, slightly more than a year of my tenure. And so the progress is that I need this nine more months to really, I think, get a firmer footing on, again, more of the technical aspects of the Medicaid reporting and understanding how the funding is differentiated. Additionally, again, my, I don't think this is too optimistic. My understanding of even how to retrieve data and then how to sort of meld it together into reports that make sense and meet the reporting obligations of our regulators. I feel like this is a good timeframe, based on what I've been able to absorb so far.
I think, uh, thank you, because you're on the same track that I am in relation to, um, the extension of the contract and then moving into another one. And, you know, I guess I have to ask you, Robert, you comfortable with the additional training and support that he's giving to you? That's going to increase the efficiency and support of your support staff? In the, in not only in the calculation and numbers and what have you. One of, one of the concerns we've had was, um, well, are people being trained properly, okay? Conflict of interest, okay, and all of that. So it is our hope, and, and I'm so enthused with what you have done already, that this period of time will further empower and encourage you to move them to a more lesser position in their support for the operation that you have and that train our people.
Yeah, yes, Pastor Jones, definitely. So, and I've had some very candid conversations with the Raymond folks about the ultimate direction, which is to frankly be less dependent on them. And I didn't sense like that they took any issue to that, that they appreciated that ideally, our expectation is that they teach us how to fish and not just keep giving us fish. And they're, they're on board with that. I, I, they already have, and, um, yeah, I mean, you know, stepping away from the analogy for a second. I believe that my, certainly my understanding of the reporting has improved significantly. I think there's also the potential for less dependence on that unique knowledge to the extent that we manage our internal accounting a little bit differently than we have. And we've made some progress on that front as well. So I, I anticipate that our, our, our needs will be significantly less in the space that Raymond's currently occupying after December of this year. I, I do, just for making sure that we're level set, I do anticipate that we will continue to need their support for some time after that, but it is significantly less.
Right, and, and that, that's, you know, I think because then the, um, the majority of the ownership is on us. That's, you know, and that, that, I think that was our ultimate goal, I should be doing this. That, that was our ultimate goal. And so if we achieve that, fine.
Okay, there's no other, oh, Dr. Giles, please.
I'm sorry if you've already stated this, but I remember in the past that one of the concerns was that maybe you didn't have enough staff to actually take it over completely. So are you completely staffed or close to being staffed to actually handle that when the time comes?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. And actually, Dana and I were discussing this very thing earlier this afternoon. So my approach coming in has been to really ask a lot of questions and kind of assess things. And presently, we are recruiting for two cost utilization analysts, an accountant. We're looking at some supervisory needs that we have and strategizing how best to do that. We are going to develop slash hire a, like a data support person specific to the budget and finance area, so outside of IT, someone who would be exclusively dedicated to getting our team the data that they need, which I think will be a significant lever in terms of our, our progress. And then I think the other considerations are how many more cost utilization analysts we might need. And just for context, those are the folks who do the rate setting analysis and also do a lot of the cost settlement work. So as we move to fee for service, that cost settlement work is going to be less. And I think also the rate analysis and rate setting is going to be more of an intensive process and more time sensitive, too. And at the point that we have all of those people trained and are a little bit further along in the fee for service transition, then we'll, we'll reassess as to whether or not we need other folks. But we do have, I think fundamentally, the answer to your question is we have looked at it and we do have a plan. Mm-hmm, thank you.
Any other questions?
Question.
Go ahead, John Paul.
So how long will that take to get all those positions?
I guess that depends on the quality of the candidates that we get. I'm hoping within the next 90 days.
Around 90 days. So right now?
And that's, just again, for context, that's having a person in the seat. In terms of having them fully developed, I think we're probably looking at anywhere from six to nine months.
So six to nine months. So right now, you're not currently fully staffed?
We are not currently fully staffed.
Thank you.
Nor, nor, again, to my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, nor, nor have we been.
Thank you.
So we are actively recruiting for those positions. And I actually have some resumes that I was reviewing prior to coming up, so, yeah.
Okay, no further questions? Can we get a motion to move this forward?
Support.
All right, Sheila, can we get a roll call?
Mr. Furman?
Yes.
Dr. Guadalupe?
Yes.
Dr. Giles?
Yes.
Pastor Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Robert.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One suggestion for you and Dana and Sheila, maybe in the spring, we do one of our study sessions, let's dive a bit deeper into it, Dr. Giles' question and John Paul's, you know, from the staffing standpoint, but I think the full board needs to take a look under the hood, that the number of, the curse of PowerPoint is, it all looks like it comes from one place at one time, and when you get under the hood and look at the number of places the revenue is coming in, and then quadruple that, the number of places the revenue is going out, it's a, I use a very old term, it's a very Byzantine system, so I think it's worth spending some time kind of in one of our study sessions to walk through that, because it is, makes higher edge funding look like a piece of cake, I'll say it that way. All right, thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
I will turn the meeting over to Evette for policy.
Thank you, Mr. Young. First up, we have the QA PIP report, Ms. Marquita Massey.
Good evening, Adam Hamilton and Dr. Pozios will be here to present tonight. What we are going to be speaking with you about is our fiscal year twenty-four year end QOPPIP report and our FY twenty-five QOPPIP. The QOPPIP for FY twenty-five requires board approval. The two documents that we're going to be speaking on, we sent to you in advance, they are really extensive documents, one is like a hundred pages, but the other is forty pages. So, we are going to provide you with a high level overview of the content for both those documents, and then answer any questions that you may have. I'll be speaking on primarily the structure of the program and operations, whereas Adam and Dr. P will specifically talk about committees that they lead and facilitate, and then chime in on any other questions or comments that they deem appropriate. I do want to share that throughout the year, the board does receive progress reports on the content of what occurs within our Quality Assessment Program Improvement Program, that would be in the term in regards to reports received on the performance indicators, our member experience reports, and the Sentinel Event Review Committee Report. We can move to the next slide, please. Impact on the persons that we serve, the QOPPIP is a required document, it's required through CMS, and it's handed down to us through our contract with the state. Our framework of our quality program doesn't change much from year to year, it's pretty static, but what does change would be the products and outcomes from those committees. We can move to the next slide. In terms of what's required of the board, the board approves the QOPPIP, and also from staff, the board receives periodic reports on progress of the QOPPIP. It's important to note that our QOPPIP does align with our strategic plan, we have performance improvement projects that are in our QOPPIP, I'm going to speak a little on one of those projects a little later, and then our intent tonight, as I mentioned, is to provide you with summary of operations of the QOPPIP and just some highlights. So, next slide, please. It's, the QOPPIP is the foundation of our QI program, and it includes the minimum requirements that must be in a program as mandated by CMS. It's important to note that there are a lot of other activities that happen within OCHN in regard to quality improvement, all those items are not in, the QOPPIP's still very important, we try to stick to what is required per our contract with the state and a CMS for the QOPPIP. Next slide, please. In terms of fiscal implications, this is supported by federal regulations, I mentioned that it's required per our contract with the state, it's also required by NCQA, it's heavily scrutinized by NCQA and by the External Quality Review Organization, which is under contract with the state, and the name of the organization is Health Services Advisory Group. There are four areas, next slide, please, there are four areas in which our quality program committees are organized, they fall up under these four areas, these four areas are required and mandated to us by NCQA, so we've aligned all of our committees to one of these areas. So, for example, in regard to quality and safety of clinical services, our risk committee, our improving practices leadership team, and our integrated healthcare committee fall up under those umbrellas. Next slide, this slide is a diagram of our quality structure, you can see all the different quality committees that feed up into our QI council, which Dr. Pozios chairs, and then from that is the direct line to our board, which is what we're speaking to you about tonight. The table of contents in these documents are organized where each of the committees fall up under one of the four areas that I mentioned. So, the year-end report is a summary of all the activity that has happened with each of our committees throughout the year, and in that year-end report, what our intent is to do is to speak about all the activities of those committees, focus on the goals that the committees set out at the beginning of the year, and to look at any barriers that might have been in place that prevented the committees from meeting those established goals, and to also speak about plans for the coming fiscal year as appropriate. Our published document, once it's approved by the board, instructions for interested stakeholders to be able to access a copy of the QOPPIP, that's available on our website, you would be able to get to that by going to the About Us link, and that's under OCHN Data and Reports. On the next slide, I'm going to talk about our QI council, and then Adam and Dr. Pozios will speak on the other two items. Our QI council is a committee that's chaired by Dr. Pozios, leadership staff from the organization sit on that committee, we also have reports that are provided to us on activities that are happening with our complex case management program, our quality improvement studies, and our population health management monitoring. In terms of our QI projects, one of which I wanted to highlight that we are focusing on right now pertains to improving antidepressant medication management at the eighty-four day level, and it's focusing on specifically decreasing disparity between the index population and African Americans. Our baseline data, this project has been going on for, this is like the second year, our baseline was at fifty-three point two percent for the index population, for the African American population, it was at forty-six point two. Overall, in 2023, which was our next measurement year, where we reported on in FY twenty-four, our overall rate was sixty-four point three three, which was above our goal of fifty-five percent. The performance for the index population was sixty-four point three, and for African Americans, forty-six point seven one, so we had a slight improvement in performance, but there was not a significant improvement in reducing disparity. So, there are some interventions that have been identified that our quality committees are working on in terms of improving performance. Basically, those pertain to providing, pertain to providing education to providers and to individuals, encouraging individuals and the providers to utilize shared decision-making, and encouraging individuals to enroll in automatic medical delivery, so their meds can be delivered to them automatically. I'm going to turn it over to Adam to speak next.
Good evening, Adam Hamilton, I'm the clinical director here, so I also contribute to the QOPPIP by leading our Improving Practices Leadership Team. That's a quarterly meeting that brings together clinical leadership from across our provider network and from within OCHN. We have a work plan that guides our activities every fiscal year. In fiscal year twenty-four, our focuses were on a few different areas, one was reviewing and revising clinical protocols and practice guidelines, we were able to review and revise fifteen clinical protocols and practice guidelines, and that allows us then to communicate best practices to our provider network, we're also able to audit on those clinical protocols and give the provider network feedback about their performance. We also look at evidence-based and best practices in terms of implementation, looking at the capacity within our network to provide evidence-based practices, and making some training and resources available to the provider network so that they can continue to maintain capacity or expand capacity to provide more evidence-based practices. Another goal that we had focused on person-centered planning, we do have a protocol that focuses on developing plans of service, we audited on that protocol, and then at the IPLT, we're able to give the provider network feedback about their performance on that, and also elicit their feedback and find out where they may need additional support. As you know, OCHN has a training department here, and so we've collaborated with that training department to provide training and support to the provider network to increase their skills with regard to person-centered planning and developing plans of service. The Integrated Healthcare Committee brings together some of the clinical people here who focus on improving integrated healthcare outcomes for individuals receiving services, and then the committee brings in similar staff from the provider network who are also focused on the coordination of physical and behavioral healthcare. That committee does a variety of things to support improved outcomes for individuals regarding healthcare integration, they look at some of the HEATIS measures that Marquita was talking about also, it's a place where discussion has had to design interventions that would improve performance on HEATIS measures, some education about HEATIS measures was provided. Health literacy and education are common topics, we have presenters come, some examples of presenters would be presenters who shared about SUD in opioid health homes, behavioral health home program, CCBHC demonstration, there is a research project going on called DECIPHER, it's disparity, disparities elimination through coordinated interventions to prevent and control heart disease risk, so it's a research program, or research project that involves the University of Michigan and Johns Hopkins University, and they're focusing on reducing heart disease related to uncontrolled blood pressure, and so they've been able to provide some education and involve some of our providers in that, and we also have a variety of performance improvement projects that we're looking at related to some of the HEATIS measures that Marquita mentioned, and so the providers give us feedback about what they might be doing internally in their organizations, we talk about the interventions, as I mentioned, and we're able to track those things through participation in the Integrated Healthcare Committee.
We can move to the next slide, please. Here on this slide, I know that Dr. P and Adam are going to be speaking about Sentinel Event Review Committee at length following this presentation, so I don't know if we need to say anything about that here, but Dr. P, you were going to speak on your group that you chair.
Good evening, Dr. Pozios, Chief Medical Officer, and as CMO, I chair the Medical Directors Advisory Group, or MDAG. MDAG is comprised of eight voting members, including OCHN core provider medical directors, as well as other physicians representing multiple primary and specialty care categories and other mental health professionals. The primary purpose of MDAG is to ensure that evidence-based standards are met by OCHN's provider network. To this end, MDAG assists with the development and monitoring of evidence-based care and participation in OCHN performance improvement activities, including reviews of OCHN medical services, policies, and programs on selected HEATIS measures, as well as other activities, and we meet on a monthly basis.
Okay, we can pause, I should have said this at the beginning, but if you have questions as we were moving along, feel free to ask, or we can wait until we complete.
Dr. Hahn?
Yeah, so, obviously, you are monitoring a lot of things that impact the care that people receive, it would be interesting to know how our performance is compared to the benchmarks either statewide or nationwide, or based on the current science at some point. It's a very exhaustive information, I am sure could take many, many sessions, but some of the, at least some of the key things that directly impact, and that's something we can convey to the people as to we really do care about them and looking at the quality of care that they receive quite closely, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Hahn, we can do that for some of our metrics, so you mentioned comparing ourselves with others, and one area where we did do that was under member satisfaction, which is on this slide that we're speaking about right now. When we spoke to the board in December, we looked at our performance in comparison to health plans and shared that with the board on a couple of different domains, so we probably could do a better job about bringing that kind of information forward more often, just to let you know how our performance is comparing with others, where that information is available. It's not available with everything, but where it is, we can do that.
Yes, of course, it's impossible to cover every angle of human beings' needs, but some of the key things, at least we should be able to, when people approach us with questions and things like that, at least we should be making some sense when we answer them, thank you.
Okay. The other items on here, under member experience, we have a committee called the Community Evaluation and Education Committee, that's a committee that consists primarily of individuals served, they advise OCHN on our policies, on our performance reports, and also advise us on actions that we can take that would really be meaningful to individuals served. Member satisfaction, I already, I spoke on that, we presented to the board on member satisfaction back in December, and then prior to that, we provided a status report in February twenty-four. When we did speak on member satisfaction, there were a couple of domains where we wanted to be able to, where performance wasn't at the level that we wanted to see. So, what we discussed as an action that we were going to take was that we were going to add a couple of questions to our needs assessment survey that was coming out this year, so we did do that with the hopes of us getting some more detailed information with our needs assessment results from individuals served, so we added a question that basically says, if you did not receive the services or supports right away when requested, what were some of the barriers to getting the treatment you experienced? And then the second question that we added was, what could your provider have done differently to help you achieve success in reaching your goals? So, our hope is that we can get some more detailed information regarding performance, because if you remember, from our outcome data, we had high performance and overall satisfaction, but there were still some areas where individuals that there's, they weren't as highly satisfied as we wanted, so our hope is to be able to get more specific information here. Okay, let's see, we can move on to the next slide. Okay, I think we're at the level, at the spot for any other questions from the board?
I did have a question.
I did have a question. Adam, when you talked about reviewing and revising practice guidelines, what percentage of the provider network is audited on those revised guidelines?
So we try to select a few protocols or practice guidelines on which to audit each year, and generally speaking, we are going to audit all the providers on those guidelines that particular year. So we kind of have some high priority ones that we've consistently done. The Plan of Service Protocol is one that we've done fairly consistently. Crisis Planning is one we've done regularly in our clinical pathway for suicide care. In almost, I think in every year that I've been the clinical director, we've audited all the providers on those practice guidelines when we have identified one that we are going to conduct an audit for.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else?
Hi.
Ms. Allen?
Yeah. First of all, this is an extremely comprehensive plan, and it is, I'm going to be honest, above my pay grade in many, many respects because it's highly technical and clinical. But that being said, it, this is something we do annually, but is there anything between last year and this year that you want to emphasize to us that you needed to change or look at in terms of either data you got that was concerning and needed to respond to it in some way, shape, or form on any of these topics? Because it, the folks can't see this, but the one report's 100 pages, and it covers the entire range of services we provide, from suicide prevention, mental health, all types of issues that we face. So, but I just thought, is there something you would like to emphasize to us that is something that you felt was necessary to change or upgrade or to take a second look at?
So I mentioned what we did in regards to obtaining satisfaction data from persons served. Another area where we had to make a change this year was we added metrics where we're going to be looking at performance on the CCBHCs. And another area would be in regards to practitioner credentialing. We are, we've expanded to our entire network, the utilization of our credentialing verification organization, Metperson. So those are, you know, three things that I can think of that, right off, that we've done differently. And you're right, it is an extensive document, required to speak to all those because it's heavily scrutinized by all those three entities that I mentioned. But Adam, I don't know if there's anything you might want to add from a clinical perspective?
I think one thing we were finding was that the scores on one of the protocols that we were auditing regularly, it's actually our acute care discharge protocol, had kind of plateaued, and we thought that a way to maybe get some better outcomes would be to change the approach that we're using to monitor that. So rather than, you know, do an audit of a specific timeframe each year, what we're going to do instead is some, we've created some dashboards, we're going to do some ongoing monitoring so we can give more real-time feedback to the provider network, and we may, if necessary, engage them to develop some performance improvement plans if they are struggling to kind of move the needle in the direction we want it to go. So we think that'll be, again, an opportunity to kind of work more directly and more in real time with them to get better outcomes in that area. So, thank you.
Doctor?
Well, I'd just like to highlight, one thing that came out of MDAG was the review of the antipsychotic adherence measures, which across the state, as you can imagine, would benefit from improvement. And so that led to the creation of a sort of unofficial statewide work group that I chaired, in which we were brainstorming ideas to improve antipsychotic adherence. And one of the tangible outcomes of that work group was the creation of an alert in our medical record system, ODIN, that prompts providers to consider the prescription of a long-acting medication, if appropriate, with the goal of trying to improve antipsychotic adherence. And so that is something actually other CMHSPs are emulating, and core providers as well, to implement in their versions of the PCE EHR. So hopefully we'll have some data on that in the coming months to see if there's a correlation between that alert and improved antipsychotic adherence.
Well, thank you for that, because it just shows, you know, we're not a static organization. This reminds me of looking at either a corporate or a hospital-type continuous improvement plan type of, and I know there's a lot of different things, because we're talking about a lot of particular specialized issues here that we handle, or that you handle, so, but it's good to know that these things are actually, you know, reviewed. It's just not reprinted and changed the dates, and I know that's not the case, because there's a lot of data in here that you have based on '24 and going forward, so making decisions and protocols that need to be put into place. So I appreciate the fact that, you know, you do this on a regular basis, and this is really an element of trust for the board, because we can't do these things. In fact, we can't even explain some of them, but you can, and that's why you're here, and we appreciate your efforts.
Thank you. And I would add that the documents that you received are collective of all the activities from various teams across the organization.
Right. Yeah, this is comprehensive. I mean, this is, this is an all-in type report.
Pastor Jones?
Yeah, you know, I want to compliment this group, because I know I've looked at some of the numbers and questioned and said, "Why not?", or "What if?", and I want to compliment you on the fact of your ability and willingness to go back and recheck, and to make sure that we are, you know, touching each base. I, you know, I appreciate that. I, you know, I think one hundred times I've raised a question about trustworthy and all of that, and you guys just really jumped on it, and so it's comforting to know. And with the number of people, you know, our chairman mentioned earlier today, 31,000 people and more, okay, that we, that you guys touch, that this organization touches, and it's good to be able to know that you're also looking at the, not only the amount of service, but the level of service, content and quality of service that we're giving. So thank you for what you guys do.
Okay, yes. Is there a recommendation to move to the full board for approval?
It's been moved.
And seconded by Dr. Hahn. If you'll do a roll call, Ms. Barrett?
Dr. Hahn, Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Ms. Woodruff?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And we now have Mr. Hamilton with the SERC report.
Yeah, good evening. Still me.
(laughing).
So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about the activities of our Sentinel Event Review Committee with specific focus on the activities of fiscal year '24. Go ahead and advance for me. So the, the committee is charged with the task of reviewing all critical incidents, or really any other incident that rises to the level where we feel a closer review would be necessary. This is the membership of the committee here, and you can see we have the membership of several teams, including our chief medical officer, several members of the clinical practice team, members of our quality team, our director of rights and advocacy participates as well. So we are really kind of pulling in lots of eyes from across the organization. This aligns with OCHN's, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead and advance. So this aligns with OCHN's strategic initiative to improve and increase the quality system of care. We're required to have these activities by our PAHP contract, and the, at the federal level, there are requirements that we are audited on as well. Marquita mentioned Health Services Advisory Group, so they come and they audit, and a big part of one of the standards really focuses on the activities of this committee. When the committee is reviewing critical incidents, what we're striving to do is to make a determination about whether that particular incident rises to the level where it'd be considered a sentinel event. And if that is indeed the case, then there is a corrective action process that we undertake. It starts off with something called a root cause analysis, and then an action plan is developed from there. So I'll talk a little bit about that as we get further into the presentation. You can go ahead and advance, please. This is just a very high-level snapshot of the number of incident reports that are submitted every year to this organization. So it's a kind of a staggering number. When you look at it, every single one of these incident reports that comes in is coded. There are risk events, and there are critical incidents, as I've mentioned, that would be reviewed by the CERC committee. And then there are some of those events that are also immediately reportable events. So those are things that we have to act on quickly. We have to report them to leadership internally, and then we have to report them up to the state as well. So this is the, an activity that's involving ongoing work every single day in this organization to monitor, to ingest all of these incident reports, monitor them, code them appropriately, and make sure the right eyes are on them so that we can have a snapshot of what is happening out in the provider network every day. Go ahead and advance. This flow chart here kind of describes that process through which the incident report comes in, it's reviewed every day, there is somebody on our rights team who is reviewing these and looking at these, and then they are disseminated to other members of the OCHN staff who go further to code them, to pass them off to people who will look at them to see if there's a potential rights violation, to review them internally, to see if they need to be presented to the Sentinel Event Review Committee. Those that are identified as needing to go to the Sentinel Event Review Committee, there's an extensive record review, a report's prepared, and then weekly, that committee meets to review those critical incidents, and then from there, we identify those which would necessitate further action. And I will talk a little bit about the process for that, as I mentioned. Go ahead and advance. So this is a breakdown and FY '23 comparison to FY '24 of the different types of critical incidents that were identified through the incident report review process that I mentioned. Every single one of these gets reviewed by a member of the CERC, and many of them are brought forward to the CERC for further review. I would also just point you to the handout that you got that is separate from the presentation. This looks at per thousand individuals served by different populations, the number of critical incidents that are occurring in the system, and then it goes quarter by quarter to kind of show you the number that are reported on a quarterly basis by population as well. I'm going to talk about some trends a couple of slides from now, and I've made some notes on the bottom of this page that also cite a couple of trends. The next slide is very much the same thing, but looking at risk events. Risk events are somewhat different than a critical incident, whereas these are really deemed to be events that would potentially put a person at risk for an unfavorable outcome, whereas a critical incident, it's a level higher. We're looking at something where there has been an unfavorable outcome for an individual. And then when you compare a sentinel event, excuse me, a critical incident to a sentinel event, a sentinel event is a critical incident where, you know, there is a significantly unfavorable outcome that we're looking at, and we are trying to look further into that to see if there's a risk of this recurring and identify causal factors that we would need to address to prevent recurrence of that event. Again, I would point you to the second page of your handout that looks at the same breakdown, risk events by population, by thousand individuals served, and then by quarter, the different types of risk events that we have tracked in our, within our organization here. There's some trends noted at the bottom, and I'm going to talk a little bit about trends in a moment. As I mentioned, go ahead and advance to the next slide. The main function of the Sentinel Event Review Committee is to identify critical incidents that rise to the level of being considered a sentinel event. The table just shows you from year to year, the number that we've identified each year, and it is, it's fairly, no, it's fairly low, and that's a, that's a good thing. That says to us that when individuals receiving services in our system are, when there, when there is an event that occurs, when there's an incident report that is filed, and we look at it, it's generally not the case that we're finding significant issues with the care for that individual. So eight in a year is a fairly good number. We do have, and I'll talk about this in a moment as well, we have another process that we are tracking, what we call clinical concerns. So this would be a concern that maybe doesn't rise to the level of a sentinel event, but it's something that we've noted. It may not even be involving the incident, but it could be something that we just identified in the record as concern, and so we're following up on those things on a case-by-case basis. I talked a little bit about the RCA process. So this is where we have identified that an event meets the definition to be considered a sentinel event, and we ask providers then to undertake a process where they identify the root causes of that event, and then develop an action plan to ensure that the event is not repeated. So that, and there's very strict timelines on this. This is something where we have to review these events in a certain amount of time. We make the request for the root cause analysis, and then it's due back to us. We review and approve the plan, and then the provider goes forward and enacts that plan. We try to keep it as collaborative as possible. You know, we want to really make sure that we are supporting the providers through that process. If there are things that are identified, gaps in protocols, maybe gaps in care where we don't have a certain service where we would maybe want to look at having another service available, you know, those kinds of things are discussed as part of this process as well. You can go ahead and advance, please. I've talked a little bit about trends, and again, I would just, I'd point you to the handout to look more closely at, you know, some of the data that informs this slide here. We know that emergency medical treatment for individuals with intellectual developmental disabilities, that's a very common critical incident code that we see. And what we tend to find, again, it's not, it's not particularly related to concerns about care. We find that individuals who have intellectual developmental disabilities may have co-occurring medical problems at a fairly high rate, so that contributes to this. And also, we find that there are more paid staff supporting these individuals, so we think that it's probably the case that incidents are just getting reported with greater frequency as a function of that. So these, I think these are, these are good things ultimately that kind of appear to maybe drive up the number of critical incidents, but actually, when we look closely at the data, you know, we are not finding any major concerns with care. With regard to deaths that are reported, every death is reviewed by the CERC and must be reviewed by a medical professional. So we have Dr. Pozios on the CERC, we have two nurses here that also help us review medically involved incidents and deaths. Deaths are the most common report, reported incident among adults with mental illness, and then second then would be individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. And natural causes are the most common cause of death, so a variety of medical conditions are identified through our analysis there. We noted a trend, and I think this organization's undertaken significant efforts to work toward improvement in this area, that all individuals who died by suicide were adults with mental illness. So we have internally a steering committee that's guiding activities and performance improvement related to care for individuals at risk for suicide. We have a collaborative work group that involves memberships in the provider network that's working on that as well, so. Can you advance, please? Thank you. There was a trend- There was a trend among arrests where we noticed that it's most common among adults with mental illness, and then this was a highly-reported event for individuals with serious emotional disturbance. When we look closely at these trends, what we tend to find is there's fairly equal distribution across reporting facilities. So we're seeing the trend in the population, but we're not really isolating any particular provider or service site that seems to be standing out as a provider that is struggling to support individuals who are having these outcomes. So I think that says that, you know, in general, the provider network is doing quite well at supporting individuals and mitigating many of the negative outcomes, and, you know, we will continue to monitor for trends and look for opportunities to just make general improvements in these areas. We noticed an increase in emergency medical treatment and arrests among individuals who were in the, among the homeless population. And so what we have kind of done at a cursory level, starting to dig into that a little bit, is like, look at maybe where, what's driving that, where those incident reports are coming from. We think it might actually be a function of increased engagement. We know there's a lot going on here from our justice team, working with individuals who might have contact with the criminal justice system. So we think this increased engagement might be driving some of that increase as well. And then there was just a general trend of increased critical incidents among individuals living in private residences. Go ahead and advance. When we looked at all of the critical, excuse me, all of the sentinel events, and I would, this is also really true of the clinical concerns that we looked at as well, we noticed just common areas where we wanted to see some improvement across the provider network, and we've undertaken some actions to do that. So areas of concern that were identified through looking at all of the sentinel events and clinical concerns would include clinical care regarding the development of crisis plans for people, and then supporting individuals who are at risk for suicide, concern related to clinical care for people who have co-occurring substance use disorders and mental illness, concerns around care coordination. And sometimes this involved care coordination with medical providers, and sometimes it just involves care coordination within an agency, a case manager, a therapist collaborating with a prescriber, and making sure certain information was shared so that the treatment team could all be informed about what was happening. And then, when we have an individual who's not well-engaged in services, we do have a protocol that kind of speaks to some expectations about how we do outreach and how we try to engage those individuals. We did have some concerns around providers following that protocol, so, you know, that's noted in our clinical concerns and then also our sentinel events. The providers who support individuals with serious emotional disturbance and intellectual developmental disabilities did not have any sentinel events in fiscal year 24. There was one critical incident involving a death by suicide that was determined to be a sentinel event, too. You can go ahead and advance. I mentioned the clinical concerns. This slide is a breakdown of the different areas where we identified some clinical concerns. Again, these would not rise to the level of a sentinel event. We're doing follow-up on these on a case-by-case basis, and it helps us to, you know, stay connected to the provider network where we've identified an incident, and we hope that through the process of doing that outreach, we're actually, you know, preventing another repeat of the clinical concern or the potential worse outcome. So you can advance. This slide just goes through a variety of different things that we did as an organization in response to some of the trends that we identified. We have the root cause analysis process. This is done every single time there's a sentinel event identified, the individual case-by-case follow-up that we do with regard to clinical concerns. We've identified the opportunities to do some additional training on our clinical protocols and practice guidelines. There are many clinical meetings that we have with different providers or different networks of providers. We use those opportunities to review the expectations in our clinical practice guidelines. We've enhanced, you know, based on some of the feedback that we've gotten through discussing the clinical protocols, based on just looking at the data and identifying maybe some gaps in the clinical protocols, we've enhanced some of them to provide, you know, better guidance to the provider network. We've been able to take some recommendations from the CERC to our Zero Suicide Committee as well, and the Zero Suicide Committee has a work plan that it is following throughout the fiscal year to improve our system's capacity to provide care for individuals who are at risk for suicide. And then we're doing some further analysis as well. So, you know, we've identified that there's been an increase in falls in group homes, so we're going to look at some data around that and see if there's an opportunity maybe to offer more training, offer some support to group home providers who might be supporting individuals who are at risk for falls. So just as an example of kind of looking forward. Go ahead and advance. You know, so we think this is really important work for the individuals we serve and for the community. Again, it really is a way that we look at how is best practice being carried out in the provider network? How well is the network following our clinical protocols and practice guidelines? It's an opportunity for us to talk about any place where we might have gaps in services, gaps in those protocols, and it is a way for us to stay connected to the provider network in some of their performance improvement activities through this RCA process or other corrective action type activities that we've undertaken. We've identified opportunities to provide more training, as I mentioned, to review and enhance the protocols, as I mentioned, and that all really derives from this ongoing monitoring of these critical incidents at the CERC level. Okay. I'll take questions.
Thank you for that comprehensive report. I was just wondering, looking at the one chart that had the dates from the 2020 up to 24, the numbers were higher during that time. Was COVID a factor in that as well?
That's a great question, and it was certainly a factor. It's a kind of a confounding variable, we've found. I think one of the things that we noticed during the throes of the pandemic is that people were generally staying home more. There was less, you know, community-based activities where people were going to skill building or supported employment services out in the community. And I think what we found is that generally kind of decreased some of the numbers because that's a time when your people are transitioning, they're in and out of vehicles, they're out and about in the community where we might have like minor injuries, falls, things like that. I think we saw those generally trend down, but of course, then there was more medical things going on as people were getting ill, too. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
I do have a question, and it was related to the deaths under sentinel events. Are the natural causes taken out of those numbers?
No. So we, the way we code is that, there's one code for a death, but then we look more closely to see like what was the cause of death. So natural causes weren't necessarily taken out, but what we would be looking at as a committee is, was this person receiving the appropriate supports? A lot of times what we're looking for there is like care coordination, did they have good communication between the treatment team at a core provider agency and then the medical professionals who were kind of maybe treating a chronic illness?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So it's conceivable that someone could die from natural causes, and we would still find that event sentinel. Probably not common in the sentinel event data that that would be the case, but it certainly would be possible. When we look at the clinical concerns around care coordination issues, that might be a place where that crops up.
Okay. Because the numbers for the actual death seemed lower than, so that's why I asked that question as to whether or not they were taken out.
Yeah. Well, not every death is necessarily going to meet the definition of a sentinel event, too. So that's part of what's going on there.
Okay.
All right. I just wanted to add that there, you know, as Adam alluded to, those are oftentimes represent opportunities for clinical improvement. For example, deaths caused by, you know, respiratory illness, you know, one of the things that we would do is then go back in the records and see, was this individual vaccinated for X, Y, or Z? And so, again, allowed for kind of process improvement through those discussions.
Gotcha. Thank you. Adam? Mr. Furman?
Yes, I know it's noted as an exception on the supplemental sheet you provided, but I, and I know it may be outside of your purview, but that instance of vehicle accidents, was that followed up upon?
Yeah, so that was definitely something that we followed up on here. I'm a little fuzzy on the details because it has been a while, and I actually, when I was looking at that risk event data, what I was doing is I was looking at the number of risk events reported by all of the reporting facilities. And so you'd be looking for one to really stand out in a quarter as having many compared to the one or none that most have. So that one stood out as it had five, but when you look more closely at that, it was five really related to one incident.
Okay.
Yeah, so that was why I included that, because I think it kind of speaks to the point I was trying to make, that we're really not seeing a trend by reporting facility. So I think that's a good thing overall. And I do recall that incident, it was looked at pretty closely because it was pretty, it stood out as something kind of anomalous that we wouldn't typically see. Five incident reports coming in from one place at one time, so.
Yeah. Thanks.
Anyone else?
I have a question over here. So the critical incidents, and then it's the sentinel events, correct? Okay. And then the sentinel events are substantiated, right? That it meets that standard? And then action steps are implemented, right, to correct?
Correct.
And then, is there a post-follow-up of the action steps, or is it just seen in the next year's cycle?
Yeah. So after the corrective actions are issued, what we're doing is continuing to monitor this data on a quarterly basis. So we have a quarterly report from somebody on our quality management team that really digs into risk events particularly. Really, I guess I should say, it really looks at all critical incidents and risk events. And then my team separately does a quarterly report where we're looking at the trends in incident report data that we think would be an indication that we'd have a concern that hasn't been fully addressed, or that we might have a concern that needs to be looked at more closely.
So the actual incident isn't relooked at, but the trends on a quarterly basis are, which would tell you?
Yeah, I think that's, that's a fair way to describe it, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Question. Dr. Hans. So what struck me was the suicide, number of suicides, pretty much twice as much, twice as many as in fiscal 23. And also, I didn't notice exactly the comparison, but it seems like injuries due to SIB are directly related. I mean, that's a little worrisome, that we had thought that we have a pretty good handle on events of suicide in the community, and this is a little bit worrisome that it's in our population, it's twice as much, so. What are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, it's definitely something we have noted. I think a thing that we've also started to try to adjust to a bit is that, you know, our system is serving more people as well, and I think with CCBHCs serving kind of a wider swath of people than just the community mental health priority population, we're seeing some of that in this data. But the concern is duly noted, and we've tried to, through our CERC process, carry forward some recommendations for our Zero Suicide Steering Committee internally, and that committee has got some recommendations for some additional training. We have taken a look at our Clinical Practice Guideline for Suicide Care, and we've developed some additional language that looks specifically at like special populations that, I think this year, we're focusing on developing an appendix for individuals who have serious emotional disturbance, so looking at how can we kind of tailor the Clinical Practice Guideline to really work very well for youth with serious emotional disturbance. In last fiscal year, we did the same, looking at individuals with developmental disabilities, too. So those types of activities.
Yeah, I have a follow-up on that as well. It would be good to know if there is a breakdown of population as to injuries due to SIB. Is it mental health, SCD, or developmental disabilities? Because my concern is for the ADD population. A lot of times, the mental health issues of that population is not adequately addressed because of communication gap, et cetera, and a lot of times, that manifests in the SIB behaviors, which may be underdiagnosed. Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great point you raise, and that's exactly what this appendix to our clinical pathway for suicide care addresses. That, you know, there are, the kind of the best practices outlined in that clinical pathway might not really easily translate to somebody who has the additional challenges of communication barriers or something like that. And we noticed underutilization of that clinical pathway process among certain providers, and so that kind of prompted a closer look there.
Any other questions? Sheila? Do I need to do a vote on this? Okay, thank you. Is there a motion by the Policy Committee to approve, to move this to the full board?
I'll make that motion.
Any support? Supported by Dr. Hans. Can we have a vote?
Ms. Newman?
Yes.
Mr. Torres?
Yes.
Dr. Hans?
Yes.
Ms. Woodruff?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Suzanne, can you come up for item four, Other Business Events and Outreach?
Good evening, everyone. Just going to share some of our events that are, have already happened in February and are coming up. Obviously, the CMHA Winter Conference was last week. I believe a few of you were there, as well as some staff from OCHN. And then OCHN participated, hosted some tables last week as well at MDH SDI Conference was for their staff. Also this morning, we had our legislative breakfast this morning. It was a great event, very well-attended. Thank you to those of you, the board members and community partners that were able to join us this morning. Lot of great stories, great conversation. I think it was very well-attended, so thank you so much. Press release just went out, and we'll be seeing some social media posts as well. We have some trainings coming up. Those are listed here. We also just want to make note of the SUD Community Workshop that's coming up. Those are our virtual workshops that we host kind of on a pseudo-monthly basis. Usually, they're about monthly. We skip a couple of months when we have like our SUD activities with Recovery Month. That's going to be held virtually at 6:30 this Thursday. As well as next week, we have our All Provider Meeting, and this is an opportunity where we meet quarterly with our providers and give them updates of what's going on at OCHN. And this one is going to be virtual next week on Wednesday. Next slide, please. Also wanted to mention, we have another, like, as you can see, there are a number of trainings that are coming up in the next couple of months. But towards the end of the month, we have that towards an SUD training, as well as some other trainings our training team is holding. Some more are coming up in March. But I also want to make note of our Abilities Awareness Event that's coming up in March, and that's on March the 5th. And I'm excited to say that we have Alex Kimmel. He is the Self-Determinator, and he's going to be our guest speaker for the Abilities Awareness Event. As usual, we are going to have our microenter- As usual, we are going to have our micro enterprise there, which is a great opportunity for us to honor all of their great expertise and their businesses and it's, it's a great, great for individuals, our staff to come and buy their goods. So looking forward to that. Coming up the afternoon, it's going to be at 1:00 PM from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. So we hope that you can join us. I'll ensure that it is on Boardable so that you're aware of some of the details. Ironically, we also have a self-determination webinar coming up, so I thought that was unique. And then some other trainings as well. Next slide. Just wanted to note some of the press releases. We've already put out the Black History Month observance, just put out the legislative breakfast and then tomorrow our needs assessment that was heavily announced this morning at our legislative breakfast. It's really important that we get out there in the community. Frances already spoke about it at the board meeting last month. Really important that we get out in the community and let people know about our needs assessment. We are, as she mentioned, we're going to be going out to our clubhouses and our SUD treatment providers and talking to individuals as well as all of our other outreach to ensure that we get our needs assessment out there in the community, but we'll be putting a press release out as well tomorrow. Advertising, our ongoing advertising is continuous. I'll be coming back to you next month and talking to you about some of that advertising as well. Next slide, please. These are just a little recap of our legislative breakfast this morning. As you can see, we had a number of representative legislators, board of commissioners who were in attendance, as well as some of our board members. That's all I have.
Not a question, a, a suggestion. I didn't, I really wanted to go to the legislative breakfast, but the reminder came Sunday night and hope maybe getting, getting them out a little earlier, like Friday, might be helpful.
Okay. I'll work with Sheila or Kara about that on Boardable. You got the reminder through Boardable?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to see if Boardable can do reminders for the events.
Okay. All right. Suzanne. All right. Our second opportunity for public comments. Any online?
If you're online and wish to speak for public comment, please raise your hand at
Any? Any in the room? Nope. Okay. All right. Uh, board member comments. Start with Adam and go around.
I'd just like to thank all of the members of OCHN who made presentations tonight. Very informative as always and thank you very much for the work that is put into compiling the packet and putting the actual presentations together as well. Again, very informative as I've already stated. Have a good night.
Carol?
No comment.
John Paul?
Uh, no comment.
Dr. Charles?
No comment.
Malchaya, who's hiding from me intentionally. Every time I look down there, you lean back behind your back.
No comment.
But.
I too would like to thank everyone who made presentations on the night and taking the time out to answer all of our questions. Great job with the formatting of the materials that were presented. Thank you.
Dennis?
Uh, yes, two, two items. First, I think the board was informed that we had a, a loss this past week of Shelley Taub. She was the spouse of Dr. Steven Taub, who several of us served with on the board, but Shelley was a, a force of nature in her own right. She served for nearly 20 years on the Oakland County Board of Commissioners. She served six years in the House of Representatives. She was, until her passing, a member of our SUD Oversight Board. I'll suggest to Dana that we find an appropriate way to honor her in the future and perhaps have her family here. Some of us attended, both current and past board members were at her funeral service yesterday. Her family spoke passionately about her. It was really wonderful to hear, especially her youngest grandson, who said Grandma spoils her every day, that he was with her. So, um, uh, it's a, she was someone who always advocated for the persons we serve, whether she was in the Board of Commissioners, whether she was in the State House, whether she was here on our committees. And Christine mentioned to me, Christine Burke, that she thought Shelley might have been on the board when it was still with the county and not independent. So we're going to look into that because she really had a history with our, our, our network. So we're very sad that she's passed, but as I said this morning at the legislative breakfast, all of us have to step up and then we have to find the men and women to step up and to replace the, the Steven and Shelley Taubs because they were, were of course very dedicated to the communities we serve. The second thing I just want to mention is we did have a really great, I believe, legislative breakfast this morning. I want to thank everybody on the staff and particularly Suzanne, you did a marvelous, seamless job this morning. She did what every moderator hopes for, not to draw any attention, just keep people moving in and out, announce them, keep everything on schedule. The trains ran and it went quite well. So thank you, thank you very much. But more importantly, I think we made some really, really good informative contacts and good time with legislators and the county board of commissioners because I did express on behalf of this board, the issues we are facing with funding and we did get some very positive responses, really good questions from legislators and, you know, we're looking forward to collaborating with them with respect to funding. So I'll leave it at that and, you know, more to follow.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I want to thank Mark, you, and Adam for their reports. It's very important because this is how our work is reflected in terms of how it impacts the people that we serve. I hope that in the future we will have more presentations like this, just focusing on one or two key issues. For example, I don't know how many of us understand the HADIS measures, which is a standard. It, it's not perfect, but that is how a lot of the performances are measured industry-wise. So continue the good work. I think your service is underappreciated, but I want to take this opportunity to thank you for the work that you do. Thank you.
Adam, go.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll echo Dr. Hans. The, having two sons who are on the spectrum, trying to measure the things that you all try and measure is admirable work. I appreciate the energy and effort that goes into it. But I'll just say publicly that, you know, in the IDD world, as Dr. Hans knows as well, that every day is a different day. You could survey my guys seven days in a row and get seven different answers. So thank you for the dedication of trying to quantify it and putting up with all the questions that come from this side of the table. Saying no further business, we'll stand adjourned until next week.